The invocation will be led by Krista Rizzi.
Yeah.
And the Pledge Allegiance, um, Gremmel.
I'm up? Okay.
Pledge allegiance. I had to stop to find out where I was at.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being gathered here today to do our city's business on behalf of our constituents. We ask that each of us be guided by you in the decisions we make that affect others and not by any personal agenda or ego. We ask that we be humble in our disagreements and that we never forget we are here to serve the people of this beautiful community. Father, we'd also like to thank you for Officer Brugman's... We thank you that Officer Brugman was able to go home so quickly. We're very thankful for the medical staff who cared for him, and we pray that he continues to make a full recovery. Although, we also ask that we also pray for peace and comfort for the family of Russell St. John, who served our community for s... I'm sorry. Who served our community for so many years through the Boys and Girls Club. He'll be greatly missed. Father, we ask for your protection for all of our first responders, those who are serving in our military and their family members. We ask that they be brought home safely each and every day. We also ask that you continue to watch over Officer Brugman's family. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
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 My condolences, as stated by the United States of America, and the City of Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
I'm okay. I'm sorry.
No, you're okay. You're good.
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Biggs?
Present.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Here.
Councilmember Nessar?
Present.
Councilmember Schroder?
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
Thank you. Considering the... As a reminder, all items under the Consent Agenda will be approved with one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, the request will be made prior to approving the Consent Agenda and will be moved to a new business. Do I have a motion on the Consent Agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we accept the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Okay. Words and presentation. Proclamation recognizing April 2021 as the Fair Housing Month. Whereas, a national fair housing law in 1986, as amended by the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States. And whereas, the principle of the fair housing is not a national... Not only a national law and a national policy, but is fundamentally a human concept and entitlement for all Americans. And whereas, the cities and towns in Arizona also provide services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, such as parks, infrastructure, libraries, community centers, and recreational programs. And whereas, April has traditionally been designated as Fair Housing Month in the United States. I therefore... I, Chip Wilson, Mayor, the City of Apache Junction, hereby proclaim April as Fair Housing Month. And Larry. Thank you.
Where's the pause?
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. You know, we do this every year, not just because we apply for federal block grant money and it's kind of a requirement. I think we do it because we believe in it. So, we have to adhere to this in our zoning code and all the actions we take with regard to group homes. That group homes came up last night in a different discussion, but you know, we have to abide by the National Disability Act and the Fair Housing Act and the Amendment. And then, I have just been looking around the Internet. I see a lot of cities actually have ordinances, fair housing ordinances, that furthers what a proclamation would do, if that really keeps what your policy is. So, I have to say that all over again? You don't want to do that all over again? I do have to say it all over again?
No.
No. It's on the record.
Anyway, thank you for doing this. I do think it's worth considering, maybe at your retreat, thinking about some policy action. That would be the strongest policy of all, is if you looked at what other cities have done and see what they have for fair housing ordinances, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Announcement... Current announcements from the Council, current events. Brayden?
Thank you. So, I wanted to highlight over... I've seen it like four times now, because I work concessions for Actors Youth Theater, but over the next couple of weeks here until April the 17th, Zayo Theater, the local community theater at Broadway and Ironwood, is performing Sound of Music, and it's a really phenomenal show. I'm not a big fan of the show in general, but they really blew me away. The sets are amazing, the cast is amazing. So, please go out and support our local theater. They've been hit hard, as many businesses and theaters have across the country with COVID. They are able to social distance, and as you can see, the chairs and your groups and things like that. But they perform on the weekends through April the 17th, Friday and Saturday at 7:30 PM, and matinees at 2:00 PM on Saturday. You can purchase tickets online at zayothater.com and just support them as well. So, and then, of course, the Genesis Project, as the summer months are upon us, our nonprofits and social service agencies hand out water. The Genesis Project is one of those, and they are accepting donations, as well as Salvation Army and the Food Bank. So, if you are at the store, stop and pick up a case or two of water, and please drop that off to them. That would be phenomenal. And then, this was actually given to me yesterday, but an opportunity to support our Paws and Claws by sponsoring a kennel. So, you can see, Level 1 sponsor for a $50 donation, your red and white plaque will be affixed to a kennel door for one month. A Level 2 sponsor is $250. It's a purple and white plaque, and that'll be affixed for six months. And a Level 3 is 500, and that's a gold and blue plaque for one year, all affixed to a kennel. And those opportunities are tax deductible as well, and of course, go to supporting a really good cause here in our community. So, if you have the ability, definitely do that now, so. Thank you.
Deal.
Okay, there's... Oh, right. Here I am. I wasn't sure what was going to come up. This past week, the city had its now annual, again, hopefully, scrub and grub, where the employees do a mass cleaning on their own areas, which is a great cost-saving to the city for them to do it. And I think all of the council was there, visited various departments. Brayden and myself went down to Paws and Claws, where we saw what a beautiful donation this father and daughter made. They painted the entire lobby in this motif. If I'd have done it, it would have been little stick dogs and stick cats, but it just sets a whole different atmosphere down there. They really appreciated us coming, because Paws and Claws are engineering department. They all feel like the ugly stepchild down on baseline, that they're heavily ignored. So, we wanted to make sure that...
We bugged them.
That they were indeed very valuable. They also went into great detail while we were there about the significant donations that both Shopper Supply...
Tractor Supply.
Tractor Supply. Shopper Supply and Tractor Supply make, and huge pallets of food. And they do it without even being asked. They just show up with food. And that's just a part of how our community is. I think people just show up, our businesses show up, and it makes all the difference in the world. Since more and more people are moving here, one of the things they keep saying is, "We didn't even know you were down here." We didn't... You know, so we have to keep talking about what we do have in the city, and even though to some of us, it sounds like same-o, same-o. If just one person, new person hears it, it's important, so. Oh, we also had that great vaccine event on Saturday and Sunday. It was put on by Embry Health. It was hosted by Parks and Rec. We had a lot of great employee volunteers. I volunteered as a board member of the CD... Community Development Corporation, which many of our board members helped out. And it was kind of slow at first, but it really picked up by Sunday. So, the second shots will be available, I believe, on the 24th. Everybody that was there was so appreciative that received shots, that it was made available so close to home. Truly, a great benefit to the city and its people.
Robert? Kelly?
I just want to thank the Kiwanis Club. They did a garbage pickup on March 27th on Goldfield, from Lost Dutchman to the Old West Highway. And I will mention, we picked up a lot of interesting things, but... One of the most frightening things to me was the number of cigarette butts that we picked up on the road. So, I just would like to remind everybody that, you know, we're in fire season, and please don't throw your cigarette butts. We have a beautiful city, we want to keep it that way, and so I just wanted to mention that.
Are you going to talk about Russell? Are you going to do Russell?
Are you going to do it if you want, as well?
Okay. Well, some of you may or may not have ever met Russell. He, for many years, was the director of our local Boys and Girls Club. I worked with him for many years. He's a... He was a phenomenal person, and unfortunately, he had... He contracted COVID back in February and was hospitalized and then released, but just a week or so ago, he had to be put back into the hospital because of complications, and he unfortunately is no longer with us. He will be very dearly missed in our community. So, we just wanted to mention this and let the community know, if you haven't already heard, about Russell. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I had attended the MAG meeting this month for our mayor, and it was actually very interesting. Hopefully, I'll be able to attend again. One of the things that I want to share is that a hot topic of conversation across most communities is homelessness, how to address it, how... What we can do to alleviate some of the various situations. And I was really interested to learn that TNP has somehow decriminalized their homeless ordinance. It would be interesting for us to learn more about that. They didn't really elaborate. But one of the common themes that was discussed through the meeting, and one of the common themes that we hear throughout communities, is we need funding to build tiny homes or homeless shelters. And I would like to partly have that on our...
Retreat?
On our upcoming retreat agenda to talk about, because I would argue that we need to change the mindset of that. We have... Most communities have the capacity through various churches in their communities to really supply a lot of these needs initially, without needing that kind of funding. And so, that's something I would really look to have some further discussions about. But I really appreciated being able to fill in for the mayor, and there was a lot of learning there. So, thank you.
I just want a couple of comments. First off, I came out both days, Saturday and Sunday, for the wonderful drive-through facilities that we set up for receiving shots. And it was, I would say, very eventful on Sunday, and it was something that, you know, a lot of people were appreciative of, and I received a lot of comments concerning it, and positive comments. And I thank Emery for doing that. And also, Russell St. John. Yes, I knew him very well, have had many dealings with him, and yes, he is going to be missed greatly in our community, even though he had moved on from the position here locally, but he was still very well-liked in his position. And finally, I'm going to just make a quick comment concerning our wonderful gypsy horse, the one that the city acquired, as she was free-roaming in our community. She has a new home, and it is a very good home. And the person that has adopted her has changed her name. She didn't like gypsy. She wanted to name her a horse of hers first horse that she ever rode as a young child. And unbeknownst to her, it's the same name as my wife, Peggy. So, she now has a wonderful name as well. Okay. Thank you. Managers' report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bryant Powell, City Manager. I want to add my thoughts to many that have been talked about tonight about Russell. Russell was and is a friend of the City of Apache Junction. He has a history back to when the Boys and Girls Club was on Winchester, and was a part of growing twice. He was asked by that organization to come back and help support families in this city in a way that's needed. And so, when I heard the news, I was devastated. He's a friend of mine, and just wanted to add my thoughts, as I will miss him. And, Your Honor, that concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Public hearings.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Number eight and nine can be heard together. If you read the titles together, and you could have one public hearing and two separate votes. And then, on 10, 11, 12, and 13, same thing. If you read the titles all at once, you could have basically one public hearing and then have four different votes.
Okay. All right, we'll have a public hearing concerning the number 21-14 and ordinance number proposal number 1503 for land development codes and... Yes?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. For the record, my name is Sidney Rice. I'm one of the planners on staff. Tonight, I'll be briefly going over the subdivision regulations and their proposed text amendments. This was... This item was actually previously heard last year in October of 2020. Council gave direction to staff to address master plan communities, the MPC, and minor land division standards within our subdivision regulations. A bit of background regarding the MPC. Of course, Sierra Horn and Brookfield Residential are the two development teams that are working for the development of the 2,800 acres. They have been working months and months to compile reports and exhibits that address roads, water, sewer, stormwater, subdivision designs, amenities, architecture, and public facilities. This coming up Monday, we are anticipating a document that is about 200 to 300 pages long, that addresses those items, as well as separate reports for those disciplines. They are anticipating very rapid growth. They're anticipating about 1,500 homes a year down there in those first four square miles. Just to give that a comparison, we currently process about 130 single-family permits a year. So, quite a big increase. The developers... Because of that, the developers are seeking to streamline the approval process of the preliminary plots. And the reason why they're doing that is because of all of the upfront planning that they're doing right now, and that both PNZ and council will be hearing in the few... In the upcoming months, both in the PADA, which is the Pre-Annexation Development Agreement, and the MPC, which is the Master Plan Community Document, document that is about 200 to 300 pages. Both staff and development team have worked to amend the subdivision regulations to streamline them a bit. The changes consist that the preliminary plots will be reviewed by a subdivision committee consisting of city employees, both including the city engineer, the planning manager, and the development services principal engineer. The preliminary plots will be consistent with the MPC, which council will approve, review, and approve, and if needed, appeals will be made to the city manager. And if that... If we can't come to a conclusion at the city manager level, then it will be heard at the city council level. The development teams will work to submit preliminary plots at risk at that stage. Usually, those engineering documents are submitted at a final plot phase, but they are in a hurry, so they want to submit their engineering documents at the preliminary plot phase at risk, knowing that final plots may or may not be approved by city council at that time. This... The amendments to the subdivision regulations and having these amendments will save the development team two to six months to start construction. The development team is anxious to catch the market, because of course, as you've all heard, there is a shortage of housing throughout the valley. As also, as part of the subdivision proposed text amendments, we are providing design criteria. So, this is a separate category within the subdivision regulations. We are providing design criteria for minor land divisions. The minor land division criteria will be consistent and be very similar to the criteria that we already have in place for the subdivision, lots that are located within a subdivision. What this will do will... It will alleviate the necessity for private accessways, neighbor disputes, illegal buildings that are code issues, and of course, also very limited building envelopes. The pictures to the right there are kind of the examples of very atypical land divisions, but we get these requests fairly frequently, both from residents, real estate agents, and prospective residents that want to move in. The manner... The minor land division changes are consistent to, like I just mentioned, are very consistent to the standards that we already have for lots located in a subdivision. I won't go through all of them, but just an example, we have depth-to-width ratios. We have minimum frontage requirements that are consistent with zoning, the zoning designations. We are not allowing, or we are not suggesting to allow curvilinear lot lines. No flag lots, so... Apologize, you can't see my cursor, but let's use Lot 1297, that would be considered a flag lot there, where that would also be probably a private accessway in some instances. So, with the updated regulations, it will address and help alleviate these kind of concerns that are heard from residents. That is my very short presentation on the amendments to the subdivision regulations. The specifics of those amendments are highlighted in the packet in yellow. So, the yellow text... Yellow text is all new text that address all my slides there. I'm here if you have any questions.
You have any questions? Okay. Seeing none. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on these two items? Okay, seeing no movement and no response. I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 1503 be read by title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Roll call.
Yeah, that's...
It's going to be on...
Number eight is a resolution, and then, number nine is...
Can you withdraw that motion?
Oh, yeah.
And start with number eight?
Because I got ahead of myself.
2114.
I think she was... Thought she was combining. She thought she was combining.
Okay, ready?
Yes.
I move that Resolution Number 21-14, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, declaring as a record and certain document filed with the city clerk entitled 2021 Amendments to the Apache Junction City Code, Volume 2, Land Development Code, Chapter 2, Subdivision and Minor Land Division Regulations, repealing and repealing any conflicting provisions and providing for severability be approved.
Councilmember?
If I may. You said record. You meant public record, correct? When you read it, you didn't say public?
Oh.
That's a...
A public record.
That it's... You meant public, correct? You didn't say public.
I didn't say anything else bad, did I?
No, you didn't. Well, I had to interrupt, because that is a critical... You meant public record, right?
Public record, yes.
Okay.
Second.
It's amended and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yeah.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Okay. Do I have a motion for number 1503?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 1503 read by title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Your Honor?
An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending Apache Junction City Code, Volume 2, Land Development Code, Chapter 2, Subdivision and Minor Land Division Regulations, by repealing and replacing in its entirety a new chapter, and by adopting by reference that certain document entitled 2021 Amendments to the Apache Junction City Code, Volume 2, Land Development Code, Chapter 2, Subdivision and Minor Land Division Regulations, repealing any conflicting ordinances and providing for severability and providing for penalties.
Okay, do I have a roll call? No, no.
Your Honor?
No, I have that...
Motion.
The main motion now.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number... Oh. Oh, no, nevermind. I move that ordinance number 1503, as read by the city clerk, be approved.
Second.
Approved and adopted, I apologize.
Second.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Okay, I have a public hearing and considerations of Resolutions Number 2113 and 2115, and Ordinance Number 1502 and 1504. Okay, this is our wonderful... Yes.
Kelsey.
Further discussions from last night.
This is not going to...
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Kelsey Shatnick. I'm a planner on staff, and tonight I will be presenting to you the proposed text amendment changes to the current medical marijuana regulations to include regulations on recreational marijuana. Just a little background for the audience. On November 3rd, 2020, the voters of Arizona passed the Smart and Safe Arizona Act relating to the responsible adult use regulation and taxation of marijuana. And on December 1st, 2020, staff was directed to amend the zoning text that addresses the medical marijuana criteria to include recreational marijuana. This is the motion that was given to... marijuana. This is the motion that was given to staff. Council member Rizzi moved to direct staff to allow existing dispensaries to become dual licensees, require the CUP amendment process operate under the same rules as existing dispensaries, allow recreational marijuana sales too, but no cultivation or processing, allow medical marijuana to convert to recreational marijuana through the CUP amendment, and the code still allow for medical marijuana cultivation and infusion kitchens. And then council member Evans motion to add on to council member Rizzi's motion that marijuana be treated like retail and liquor stores in the B1, B2, and B3 zoning districts. So in response to that, staff drafted two different versions of the text. The first version allowed dual licensees, regulated recreational marijuana establishments the same as medical marijuana dispensaries, and did not allow recreational marijuana testing facilities. And then version two allowed standalone recreational marijuana establishments in the B1, B2, B3, and B4 zoning districts, and regulated recreational marijuana establishments in the same manner as medical marijuana dispensaries. Staff also realized that additional changes would need to be made to the non-residential use regulations to include recreational marijuana, as well as the definition section. So a work session was held on February 23rd, 2020, with the Planning and Zoning Commission. They recommended us to move forward with version two, which again, allowed dual licensee facilities through the CUP process, as well as standalone recreational marijuana establishments in the B1 through B4 zoning districts, and regulated it in the same manner as medical marijuana. And then a public hearing was held on March 23rd, 2020, and the planning commission unanimously recommended the approval of the amendments to version two. And so in response to that, we drafted ordinance number fifteen oh two, which would adopt specific changes to the one dash six dash twelve medical marijuana regulations, and resolution twenty-one thirteen, which would declare the language a public record and adopt the text by reference. And then ordinance number fifteen oh four would adopt the incidental changes to the non-residential use table and definition section, and resolution number twenty-one fifteen would declare that language a public record and adopt the text by reference. So last night, we held a work session with city council, and a couple of the council members had questions about different things. One of them was regarding other municipalities' response. This is just a very small snapshot of what other cities around us are doing. So as you can see from this list, that most cities are prohibiting marijuana establishments unless they are a dual licensee, and prohibiting testing facilities. Queen Creek on this list is the only exception. They are prohibiting both marijuana establishments and testing facilities, and I believe they are allowed to do this because they have no existing dispensaries to become a dual licensee, so they can not allow either. And then another question had to do with the potency of medical versus recreational marijuana. Basically, there is not a rule for distinguishing a difference in potency between both programs. With medical marijuana, patients can purchase it of any potency, and with recreational marijuana, users can purchase it with any potency except for edibles, which is limited to 10 milligrams of THC per serving and 100 milligrams per package. The main difference is how much you're allowed to buy. So medical marijuana patients, I believe, are allowed to buy a little bit more than recreational users. So moving forward, we kind of have three options. The first option would be to approve the planning commission's recommendations of ordinance number fifteen oh two and fifteen oh four. The second would be to continue this item for a future date for staff to draft an alternative ordinance that would propose more restrictive regulations. And then the third option would be to do nothing and leave medical marijuana regulations kind of as-is. The only thing we wanted to point out with leaving everything as-is, is that there, so there are two things. So with that, there would be no regulations that would specifically relate to recreational marijuana in the zoning ordinance. So applicants can interpret this one of two ways possibly. They could agree with staff and say, it's not in the code, it's not allowed in the city, okay, I'll move on. But they could also disagree with staff and potentially seek an appeal or interpretation from the board of adjustment. So that's just something we wanted to point out for you to think about. And then in terms of encouraging home cultivation, you know, potentially if we don't allow additional facilities and people want to partake, they might, it might encourage home cultivation, so there might be more people growing in neighborhoods. Again, just something to think about. And then the second thing would, this may allow for dual licensees to go to fully recreational facilities without a CUP. If they're a dual licensee and operating already selling, they, it might be a possibility that they could do away with the medical and just continue with recreational. I think that's something we'd have to look into with their licensing, if it would even allow it, but just something that we wanted to put out there. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any discussions?
I do have just one, Kelsey, I don't know who's controlling it. Can you go back to that last?
Yes, sir.
Yes. If we were, Joel, if we were to do nothing, and understandably, that if somebody were to disagree with the zoning administrator's decision that it goes to the board of adjustments, is there a way that we could circumnavigate that where it comes before council, or how would that work if possible?
Council member, if a zoning administrator makes a decision, under the city code, a person can appeal that, and those appeals go to the board of adjustment. That is by statute. So no, you cannot circumvent that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So with the new implications, I think it would have been probably beneficial to have those ahead of this evening of making the decision. I have, this actually brings up more questions for me, and so at this point, being, coming into the meeting prepared to make a decision which, you know, which way I would prefer to go, I no longer have that comfortability. So I feel like, at this point, we need to look into it and ask further questions in another meeting.
I'd agree.
I'd like to thank P&amp;Z for their efforts in preparing this for us tonight. We have received additional information. Council member Biggs provided us with some, Pinell County cities, three of which are allowing both. One is Maricopa's voting on it tonight. In some of the information that was given to us by Joel, I was surprised at the number of, the small number of licenses that are going to be available. There's only 26 in the whole state. So they're not going to be on every street corner. But the one thing that I read that bothered me more than anything was it's put out by the league's attorneys is municipalities taking advantage of statutory right to enact prohibition zoning are inviting accusations of racist policies. And I really want to look into that a whole lot more.
I'm not sure that was a league attorney. I think that was from the Arizona Attorney Magazine, is that correct?
Ah.
I think it was, and so that was an attorney writing about it.
Yeah.
Who probably supported the medical marijuana. So I don't think it was a league attorney.
That's why I say...
It was an opinion.
That really bothered me. Yeah, that was the...
It was a...
So on that basis, I would also like to continue this.
I think that was an opinion, though, of, of some attorney basically saying, league, you shouldn't be putting this out there for these kind of restrictive ordinances. I think that's what that was. That was a editorial from an attorney.
Gary Smith.
Yes, he, yeah, he's not the league attorney.
And it was referring to, excuse me, racism? Mm-hmm.
That attorney had that opinion, yes.
Your honor.
Okay.
Yes.
I agree in continuing this. I talked to, let's see, the mayor of Superior, councilwoman in Florence, councilmember in Coolidge, the mayor of Eloy, a councilmember in Casa Grande, and then the mayor of Maricopa, all today, over this afternoon. And as Gail mentioned, Maricopa's discussing this tonight. They're actually not going to vote for it tonight. They're just discussing it. And they're all asking more questions, too. I mean, based off the information that Joel provided us as well, from December 4th, roughly 18% of the 91 municipalities across Arizona have said either no to both establishments and testing facilities, or only allowing dual licensed facilities. So it seems cities and towns are pushing back on the will of the people, if you will, and what they wanted. And we're certainly not alone in this, and many, many cities, it seems, including our fellow Pinell County communities, are trying to figure out what the best course of action is. I don't think we're ready to make this decision. I don't think it's fair to do this to the voters at this point, and our constituents and our community. I've got a lot more questions.
I don't know, I don't think it's rocket science. We have two, two's enough, whatever we need to do to keep it that way.
No?
I don't have anything, your honor.
I don't have anything other than, can you send this to, to us? We didn't get that in our staff report.
The PowerPoint?
Yeah, I just want to look at a couple of things you've got in there.
Yeah, that was, that was just something that we were thinking about today, which is why you guys didn't get it, because this is, you know, I put this together maybe an hour or two before the meeting, because we were just talking about different things that could come about.
No, no biggie, but yeah, send it, if you should, send it to us. Thank you. Good information to have, but we need it a little bit sooner to make a big decision.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If there is going to be a motion to continue, it needs to state, you need to state all the items. So you state resolution number, and also ordinance number, and that has to be in the motion for all of them. I don't think you have four different motions, but one motion can handle all of it. But you make it to a date certain. I don't think two weeks is enough time that the city manager agrees. So you might want to put out, put it out at least a month.
Yeah.
But that's up to you. But two weeks, that means Kelsey has a week to prepare another package of what you want, and that's it, because the city manager requires a week notice before the agenda is...
Yeah, we'll start, we'll start preparing the agenda for the next set of meetings.
Tomorrow.
Basically tomorrow and the next day, and so it's real tight. So if you do want to pick a date...
Yes.
We'd be required...
We should ask Kelsey how far...
If you want to do a work session also, that would make it easier, but you should pick a date certain. I would say, so we don't have to publish for the notice of the public hearing. The next work session going out that long would be May, May 3rd is sooner, but that's not, that's probably not enough time. So May 17th would be the next work session that I think staff would recommend, unless Larry, you want to say something different on that. Okay, so May 17th would probably be a good time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Should we ask staff maybe if they want it, is that for any reason enough time, or do you want more time?
Well, and I had a question on that, in that, if not enough time, are we not allowed to postpone till, without saying a date certain? I mean, giving staff plenty of time to...
No, I would go with a work session on May 17th, and then a council meeting for the vote on June 1st. And then if on June 1st, that's not enough, then you do another continuance.
Okay.
Yeah. So Joel, we're talking about 10 through 13, correct? And in the motion, each...
Resolution.
Resolution number and...
The ordinance numbers.
Ordinance numbers need to be named, okay?
Yes.
Might take a little minute.
So it's, so it's ordinance fifteen oh four, and resolutions twenty-one dash thirteen and twenty-one dash fifteen.
And ordinance fifteen oh two.
And fifteen oh two.
Yes.
So two resolutions, two ordinances.
Okay.
Your honor?
Okay.
May I?
We have a...
We've got a public hearing.
We have a public hearing here now, so, any other questions before we go on to the public hearing? All right. I do have one request to speak on this. Mr. Schroder?
George Schroder, 2444 West Virginia Street. As you might guess, I have a lot of experience in this area. Just some background, I have a 10-year degree in ornamental horticulture. So this is one of the, like, first things I ever did in my life, was grow estroponic soil and pot plants, and 600 acres in Iowa. I got a truckload just for helping out. It's a long time ago. Long time ago. Anyway, I'm kind of thinking with Mr. Biggs, we're not hearing anything about how this affects kids, how we keep it away from them, how we keep, how we just disdain this from anybody under 18 years of age. It causes arrhythmia. That's what I got, arrhythmia. Okay? And it's bad. That was years ago. What we got, what we're growing today, what these people are putting in these plants today, forget it. You're looking at death. Maybe not next year or the year after, but you're looking at death. For what? For retail money? Okay, three years ago, when we had this coming through here, the attorney, I don't know if she's legal, she committed four felony standing here, asking if the police could help deliver the drugs. She broke another federal law, trying to enhance her business. So one facility wasn't enough, so she came in, what, a year later, asked for another facility cut. Like, wow, what is the matter with these people? Do you not understand that the federal level is still illegal? Yeah, there's a lot of people that want to smoke it. Great, go have at it. But we are not hearing anything, how to keep this environment, not just the drug itself, but the environment, away from our kids. I think the medical marijuana is the way to go. The will of the people shouldn't supersede my rights as a homeowner, for I got to live next to these people. And right now, we're dealing with that in my neighborhood. The cops have been there three times, code enforcement's been there how many times in a week? Not, I'm not the only one calling code enforcement, okay? This is a problem. And we're not going to solve it in one meeting, one month, one year. This is a, a ratification that needs to have input from people dealing with reality, not the ones that are smoking it. And that's the ones who just want to make money from it. And that, this is bad. We're not getting any input, how this, you know, the laws and the actions that are being put in place to keep this away from the kids. Anyway, thank you.
All right, there's still public hearings. Anyone else want to speak on it? All right, let's see, seeing none. Can I have the motion for at least the first one, which would be fifteen oh three?
Your honor. Joe, I have a, Joe, I have two questions real quick before the motion. Can we combine both resolutions and ordinances in the motion to table?
I would, to table?
To, to continue.
Or to continue? I would combine all four.
Okay.
But...
Do you need them individually, or is it better?
No, I think one motion's fine with all four. However, I do have a note from Rudy. I'm going to read it, Rudy. Is that okay?
Share your note with the class.
In their motion to continue, should council also indicate what questions, issues they would like addressed next? So I would agree that, yes, if you have a list of questions, maybe you should list the issues along with the motion, or in the motion.
Well, Joel, one of the questions I have right off is, anybody has the ability to file an appeal against the, the planning, the administrative decision of our development services, do they not? They have the ability to file an appeal with anything.
Mr. Biggs asked that, yes. And the answer is, it goes to the board of adjustment.
Okay.
But if there's other questions you want specifically that staff to look at regarding these resolutions and ordinances, I would put that in the motion, and bring it back on whatever day you want to bring it back. We would suggest May 17th for the work session, and June 1st for the public hearing.
Okay. June what?
First. June 1st.
Okay. Well, I have a motion if anybody wants to have any questions to that, or if they just want the motion.
Do you have a question? Brady?
I do, but I, I mean, I want more data on what some of our other cities across the state are doing. I mean, I think, I know, based off of what Joel provided us, this was... I mean, I think, I know, based off of what Joel provided us, this was from December 4th, and obviously, we discussed this yesterday, so we couldn't throw everything together in time. But if the league could possibly provide us an updated version of this and have some of that, I would also... I actually, I guess that's my biggest one for right now. I may have others.
Mr. Mayor? If we... Joel, if we have any questions, though, in between, even if we don't put them right now in a motion, if we have any questions, we can get with Rudy or whoever and ask them to supply information for the next meeting, no?
You can. I would direct your comments to the city manager.
Yeah, so when we go down that route, just, we can do that. And certainly, there's time to do that. Rudy, I would... And Larry knows my rule, that I want all of you all to know the question when it came in and the answer as quick as we can, so we're all on the same page in knowing what questions are coming in and what answers are. And you do that all the time, anyway.
You can put that in your motion if you want.
That would be the thing. Can we put that in a motion? Is that possible? Where we get Bryant a list of questions by a date certain?
Or just put that any questions can be directed to him?
We're getting way too complicated here. What's the purpose behind this?
Exactly. I think we just need to make a motion, stick to our resolutions and our ordinances, and send our questions to Bryant. Thank you. I appreciate staff's opinion, but I think it complicates things.
And do not copy each other because of the open meeting law.
Yeah. I just, I think we get too much, like, I'm with Robert. We get just complicating it where we're going in circles.
We do this all... Yeah, we do it all the time, just...
Your Honor?
Okay, so I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that resolution 21-13, resolution-2115, ordinance 1502 and ordinance 1504 be continued to the work session of May 17th and council meeting of June 1st, regular meeting of June 1st.
Public hearing? You mean public hearing, right?
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Second.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt real quick? Did we say 1503?
Yes.
We did.
No.
No.
Did we not?
Not 1503.
And 1504.
And 02.
We did 02 and 04.
We don't need 03. 03 was...
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. I apologize.
Yeah, 1503 was land development.
Yes, I see that. I'm just looking down and scanning it, sorry.
Did we get that?
So, we got them all.
So, I have a notion and a second.
And the second was?
Gail.
Councilmember Evans, thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Greml?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
New business.
Okay, public hearing, consideration, proposed ordinance 1504. We've already been covered. So, we're now on to old business, and we have none, new business. Consideration of the resolution 21-12. Chief Kelly. Had to look, see who I was supposed to call up. Grant program.
Morning, or good afternoon, this evening, whatever day it is right now. After the marijuana thing, I don't know where I'm at. This is one of the resolution 21-12 authorizing you, as the council's approved, the police department to receive governor's office of highway safety funds for DUI enforcement, including cannabis enforcement. This will allow us to accept more than $133,000 in funds from the governor's office, which will not cost the city any money except accepting it. And there was a list of items that were noted in your handout that identified some of the items that we will be purchasing. That's my big presentation for the evening.
So, chief, in order to get the opportunity to for the funds, we have to go through this process to get...
Yes, you need to have a resolution from you to approve us to accept these funds.
Okay.
You could drag it out a little longer.
Yeah.
You could tell us what some of these things are.
Well, part of it is pay for some of the overtime for the officers will have when they're on the street enforcing some of the DUI laws, which the governor's office has always been supportive of. We have gotten to a stage in the property evidence room that our flood serial type items are possibly going to be compromised because of the lack of refrigeration. So, they're going to authorize us to purchase a refrigerator evidence storage unit. It'll allow us to purchase a additional police vehicle for DUI enforcement. That'd be a F-150 truck. And then, it'll authorize us for a speed traffic enforcement program for overtime and two LiDAR machines, which is the advanced new radar machines. And that's about it. Governor's office has been very supportive of your city.
Yep. Any additional questions?
I just want to know where the new radar machines are going to be.
Do you want to know where they're going to be located by your home?
Yeah.
Hey, I was in the car with her last Thursday, let me tell you. She needs them.
Glad it was out of town.
Anyone else, any other?
I take it that these traffic and criminal software 22 printers, scanners, that they're in the vehicles with the officers?
As I presented it as not to accept more than $133,000, because we were kind of promised that they will get that funded to us before this grant gets approved through last year's money. I won't say how that happened, but I'm glad to accept it now.
Good deal.
All right, any other questions? All right, do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that resolution number 21-12 authorizing the submission of application to the governor's office of highway safety federal fiscal year 2022 grant program be retroactively authorized.
Second.
Move to second, roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Greml?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Okay, there's going to be no direction to staff. Selection of meeting dates. The next regular scheduled meetings are Monday, April 19th, with an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM. And on Tuesday, April 20th, with an executive session at 6:00 PM and a council meeting at 7:00 PM at 300 East Superstition Boulevard in Apache Junction. Other meetings may be scheduled if necessary. All right.
And we need a vote on that.
I need... Motion, please.
Okay, I have a motion.
So moved, Your Honor.
So, I have a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Greml?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Okay, and I have no more public to speak, so I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
I am.
Call the... He has them on both.
Oh. Okay. I'm sorry, I did not see that. I thought it was strictly the one.
Obviously, I got some problems. I listened last night to some of your comments and stuff. The garbage deal was supposed to be less trucks on our streets. I don't know what they were thinking, but I got trucks on my streets five days a week, every week. Every week, five days a week. Summer at 6:00 in the morning, summer at 9:00 in the morning, summer at 2:00 in the afternoon. But five days a week. If this is about my streets that are disappearing for 40 years, it's not helping. I'm a little bit ahead of myself. I'm a little bit Irish. I should learn how to do the jig. The governor is supposed to sign a legislative rule that the garbage is no longer a crime. So, if I want, I will go back and I will address the city when two officers come out to my house to deliver a summons and put me and my girl in jail. Really? Okay, so, we want to be nice to these people? As your comments last night. That doesn't sound like nice to me, okay? They go over to my neighbors six times at 2468 West Scenic. They've been there five times in the last two days, police, code enforcement. This woman has done this six times in six years, where she invites the people, has the problems, takes them out, keeps all their stuff. She has the whole yard is full of stuff. Well, now she put a tarp in front of a carport where more homeless and seriously more criminal are sleeping under this tarp. Now, this is a problem. I talked to the owner at 2603. He is not going to comply in any way with city ordinances, getting him and his homeless and drug addicts and people out of the property. So, we need direction to staff, get them out of there. Because if I have to, I will. Make no mistake about it. I'm really good at it. I've shown you lots of times. I'm really good at what I do. So, don't make me do it. Do your jobs. Get these people out of my neighborhood. Now, Mr. Biggs, you have a neighbor, three years now, people sleeping in their trailers behind their house. All the equipment, all the trucks in other people's yards, the tractors across the street, night and day, 6 o'clock in the morning. He's got multi-vehicle in his front yard, always against code. They voted for you.